Okay. Let's just call our meeting, because we want to make sure we get through stuff in time before Bob wants to do a quick statement.
I'm good. I got another setup video.
You'll be good? Okay. We'll start anyways at six o'clock. So there is a flag in that room, so just face that way.
Or Bob.
Or Bob. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Dave still not on?
No.
Okay. So we have a roll call. All board members are present except for Tim and Daryl.
As well, please, just Tim.
And both.
And now, you guys can say.
Tim and Daryl are here. And Dave. Dave is not with us quite yet, so. We do have a proper notification of an open meeting. First action item is recommendation to approve the minutes of the July 8, 2020 regular board meeting and the August 12, 2020 special board meeting. Your motion from P E. You're the second.
Second.
And Sue is the second. Any question on that? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Next action item is a resolution to approve the bill list.
I'll make them all submit to approve the bill list.
You have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And Sue, the second. Any question on the bill list? Hearing none, all in favor, state aye. Aye. Close. Motion carries. Spring semester part. Laura, catch us up.
Yes, so I wanted to share several brief updates about work this summer. Obviously, a majority of our work this summer has been about reopening school. You've been briefed on our reopening plan multiple times, and that plan was approved a week ago. So I'm not going to spend time reviewing that plan at all. But I would like to, I guess, once that plan is finished, now we're heading into sort of second phases of that. So we're planning details. We've had teachers and our program leaders, our department chairs, have been working just tirelessly on getting prepared for both in-person instruction as well as virtual instruction. We, right now, we have about 11% of our student body signed up for virtual learning. And the same teacher that's teaching in, let's say, this classroom may have 28 live students and might have two or three virtual students. And so that's a lot of extra work, and it's a big responsibility on our teaching staff. So they are preparing to do the best job they can for both the in-person learners as well as the virtual learners. They're actually spending probably more time thinking about virtual than in-person, because in-person, you know, they could do it their eyes closed. They're great at it. That virtual piece is where we're all still learning. So that's been a big piece of work this summer. And another component related to COVID-19 that we are now facing and addressing relates to staff issues. So I actually gave you a handout that's a summary of employee rights. And an act called the Families First Corona Response Act, or FFCRA, went into effect, and that allows for employees, not just school district employees, but any employee, any qualifying employees, to take a leave of absence related to six specific reasons. So you can see those reasons in the box about 2/3 of the way down the sheet of paper. And we have some of our staff members that are looking into taking either FMLA or extended FMLA or this FFCRA leave. That we're working through, but that possibly will pose a challenge. And let me give an example. We have several school districts in our region who have decided to do a hybrid model. So rather than being, having their students in person five days a week, as we're intending, they're going to have half their students there every other day. Or half their students there on Monday and Tuesday, and then on Thursday and Friday, it'll flip-flop. And the other half of the students will be in person and half their students learning virtually. Part of the new federal legislation with the FFCRA is that employees may take a leave of absence in order to care for their own children. So if a childcare center closes or a school closes, that employee, our employee, can get paid 2/3 of their regular salary, up to $200 a day, I believe, to be home to help with homeschooling their own children. So just between Peewaqui, Wauwatosa, Oconomowoc, and Waukesha School Districts that are using a hybrid model, at least for a couple of weeks. Some of them are indefinite and some of them are easing in for two to four weeks. Just those school districts have, hmm, at least six or seven of our teachers needing to figure out, what am I going to do with my kids, my own children, half the time? So some of them are scrambling for childcare. Some of them are looking into leave through Arrowhead. We, we recognize administratively that that can cause a lot of inconsistent instruction for our own students if every other day your math teacher is absent or if half the week you have a live math teacher and half the week you have perhaps a substitute. Substitutes are another huge challenge, because many of our substitute teachers are actually retired teachers that love kids and they want to stay engaged part-time. Many of those retired folks are not comfortable being in a school with 2,100 students during a pandemic. So we are, we're facing some decisions related to instruction. If we cannot find adequate substitutes, and for instance, oftentimes, a substitute comes in for a day, and they're not doing, they're not really teaching chemistry or they're not really teaching physics. They don't have that expertise. That would like me be me, going in and trying to teach calculus. I would be a babysitter. I would not be able to be equipped in expertise to teach calculus. If you think about 12 weeks allowed of FFCRA, that's three months of perhaps half the week without a teacher. With a substitute who doesn't know the subject matter, or if we can't find substitutes with some of us, some administrators are realizing our schedules might be sitting in classrooms. We might be, we might be looking at allowing teachers who must be home for half the time to be actually teaching from home, virtually. So if they qualify for the FFCRA, we might, if they agree and we agree, we might be allowing them to teach from home, virtually. Their image would be up on the whiteboard through a computer. So the class could see them. They could see the class. They would teach remotely. And in that classroom, we'll have to have someone, you know, hire a sub or have, I don't know, like a teacher's aide may not be able to do their regular job. They might have to sit in classrooms to do supervision. We don't know how, how much that will happen. Right now, we know that there's some people investigating that because of other, other school district schedules. We also realize that we could have close contact situations with COVID-positive cases that potentially could have staff members quarantined for two weeks. And then we'd be facing the same thing. That's one of the allowable areas where they can take a leave of absence. Would they take a leave of absence and we're trying to cover them with a substitute? Or would we perhaps allow them to teach from home remotely and then pay someone else to sit in the classroom as a supervisor? So those are some of the human resources challenges that schools, certainly not just Arrowhead, but schools across, perhaps the country, but certainly within our region are facing. I can tell you that many districts that I know of in our southeastern Wisconsin region have had a, I don't want to say a significant number, but several teachers have decided to retire or resign because of the teaching conditions. Arrowhead, we haven't had that. We had one resignation of a teacher, one retirement of a custodian that were surprises to us. Neither one of them put in their resignation letter. It was related to COVID, but it could be. So I just wanted to make the board aware that where we have a great plan in place, that plan is, is going to have to be nimble, and it could be threatened, that five days a week of being in person, that might be threatened not necessarily by a disease spread, but by employee, a lack of employees or employee absenteeism. To try to prevent that, we're being really firm with our staff members to say, at all costs, stay six feet away from each other and from students. Because that six feet for 15 minutes is what can, makes you consider to close contact. And if someone in the class, let's say a student is positive, if that teacher has been within 15 minutes or within six feet for 15 minutes of that student, they will need to be quarantined for two weeks. And that's what could be crippling to our instruction. So we're helping staff members realize how important it is, and it's hard. You know, our teachers love students, so it's just so natural to walk up and pat them on the back and to lean over and help them with an assignment for a while. Or conferencing, where teachers will pull a chair up to the student's desk and they sit and talk. It could be 15 minutes. We can't do that anymore. So we actually have teachers that are with painter's tape, taping off a six-foot square kind of around their desk area as a reminder for themselves and students to take that precaution. I think there's, at least for me, there's more concern about close contacts and being quarantined than there is actually for disease spread. I think, I think our staff members will be safe in terms of disease. The masks will help with that, but that close contact, we need to keep people here and employ, not employee, but here and working. So Jeff, in terms of the HRPs, do you have anything to add?
Not really. I mean, it's really, we're going to stick to the, the FFCRA leave provisions. There's six criteria or six different eligibility opportunities, I suppose. I think the one we're going to run into is, is the fifth one, which is when they have to care for a child whose daycare is closed or their school is, is not available to them. So I think that's going to be what we'll, we'll be faced with, you know. We, we don't know to what extent at this point. We're getting inquiries from various staff members. They're concerned. You know, how do I do this? My kids go to Wauwatosa. They're every other day. So I think if they meet these eligibility criteria, we could look at the teaching situation and see if they can come in and do it virtually and have someone be there for supervision only. And maybe that's a better experience for students anyway, to have the, the full-time teacher who's, who's, has the expertise in that area to cover the class.
So it wouldn't be an ideal situation, but it might be better than every other day having someone who's just supervising. The other factor that would be less than ideal is if, as a school, we need to close and move into fully virtual because of absenteeism or because of disease spread. Another, I guess, decision point we'll have is, would we be allowing teachers to teach from home as they did in spring? Or would we be requiring teachers to be here on-site to do their virtual instruction while students are at home learning virtually? And in spring, it was, you know, that was very short notice, like four days notice, if that, and the schools were shut down. So the vast majority of schools, if not all schools, had teachers working from home. We were allowed to have teachers come in if they wanted to, because they were considered, you could consider a teacher an essential, an essential employee. But most places had teachers teaching remotely. Now, where we know that virtual learning could be a reality for many or all schools at some point or for periods of time, it might be for a couple of weeks or a couple of days, now there's a lot of consideration, what, what's best for instruction and what's best for those employees. So there's a, a CISA One, or our region, survey out right now asking superintendents, what's your plan in terms of if you must go fully virtual, would you require teachers to be in the buildings? Or would you allow them to teach from home? The last that I looked yesterday, it was about 1/3 of the districts were saying we'd require them to be on-site teaching. There was about 1/3 saying we'd leave it up to the teacher's choice. They could teach from home. And there's about 1/3 of us saying, we haven't figured that out yet. So I bring that up here because I'd kind of like to get your feel for, or a feel from you if you would have an opinion on that. Some pros and cons. If we had teachers, if we said, you know, your job is still here, all your supplies are here, your colleagues are here. It makes sense for you to teach from here. The benefit, some of those benefits are perhaps better instruction or more synchronous instruction with their typical workday, which can be a benefit for students, keeping a regular schedule. It can also be a benefit to staff members. We had teachers reporting that in spring, their workday never ended, because they would teach their typical schedule and then students weren't logged in. And they'd log in at from 8:00 to 11:00 p.m., and then they'd ask questions via online, and teachers were trying to answer that. Other families report sort of the opposite, that their students would try to log in and converse with the teacher during the typical school day, and the teacher wasn't available. So in terms of scheduling, it may be better to have staff members working from work. On the other hand, we still could have that problem. In fact, we could have much more of the issue of teachers' own children are now also virtual. So should they work from home because their kids are there? They are allowed to if they take a leave of absence, but then we don't have them as teachers. So we could allow them to teach from home while they're still doing their own children's care. One thing that we're looking into, and Adam's been great with taking the lead on this, is looking into providing childcare on our campus for staff members. So staff members that have school-aged children, if we go into full virtual, they could bring their kids to work with them. They would be paying. It's a weekly amount. And their kids would be somewhere on our campus with a childcare provider. It's a nationwide company that we're looking into. And their kids would be doing virtual learning somewhere here on this campus with a childcare provider, and our teachers would be in our classrooms. So we're thinking that would provide at least, you know, help make it easier for our teachers if they're in that predicament. You know, certainly childcare is their issue or their choice and their problem, but as much as we can help to make it easier for them, that ultimately impacts our students and provides better instruction for our Arrowhead students. So if we, if we require teachers to be on campus, that I would consider to be kind of normal protocol, just like normal workday. They're here on campus. If we were allowed, if we were to allow teachers to work from home, that I would consider to be a handbook change. In spring, it was emergency. We didn't have a lot of choice. Now, I don't think it's the same level of urgency and emergency. So if we allowed from working from home, then I think we would drop, we have samples from other school districts. We would drop some requirements or some expectations for teachers. If you're working from home, here's what it looks like. Here's your hours. Here's what we're expecting. And then I'd want to bring that forward to the school board for approval, because it would be, I guess, an amendment to our employee handbook. So I know this isn't an action item at all, but if, you know, if any of you have any thoughts on what we should be pursuing, or if I got a feeling from, you know, this body, like absolutely, we're not going to force them to be on campus or absolutely, we're not going to allow them to teach from home, that, that could steer our, our work as an administrative team.
Laura, did any, have any teachers expressed interest in the, in the, having their kids here on campus? Are they aware of it and have they deposited?
They, they're not aware of it yet because we just started looking into it. So we haven't talked to the staff about, we may require you to work here. Some of them are probably assuming they would be working from home like they did in spring. Although many of them have teacher friends in other districts that have already made that decision. So I, I would assume it wouldn't be a foreign subject of working from work. And then we probably will put out a, a survey to staff. If we go full virtual, if we have you working here, do you need childcare? Would you have interest in an on-site care where you pay X amount of dollars? Here's what it would look like. Because that company that Adam's working with, they'd like to know also. It will take them about 30 days, is what they estimate, to get it up and running, because they have to hire people, you know, in this region. If we, if we had to move to virtual instruction for, if it's just a few days, that's one thing. If it was a whole month, we probably would have staff members furloughed like we did in spring. And perhaps some of those staff members that are furloughed because we don't have work for them, they could be excellent candidates to be hired for the childcare center. Some of our parents might want to, you know, take on that job.
It seems that the two options you talked about, the, my thinking of this, whatever we can do to get our teachers in front of the kids is the best option. Whether that's what I'm saying is, the option of, if we can have them at home, but they're in front of our class on the screen, is better than them being at home collecting $200 and not doing anything. And we have to have subs or not even be able to have subs. But I think the option of, if you want to be in the building, come in the building. Maybe they're more settled being in here. And for the ones that want to be able to be at home, as long as it's, like you say, as long as it's regimentated that there's these expectations, there should be no reason that a student can't connect with them when they're really supposed to be on our clock, right? So that seems like that's the most flexible. It takes into account everybody's kind of situation and gives them that option. And it gets them in front of the kids, whether it's in a classroom or over a computer screen. Versus, we don't see them for two days a week because they have to take care of their own children.
Now, the kids are in, if the teachers are, are in school and at home, can the kids at school get to them either way? And can the kids at home get to, whether they're at home or school? You know what I mean? Is there a way that they can do this? This seems like an awful lot.
Yeah, because you will have kids that are opting to, that, as you said, that are opting to be virtual. They need access to it.
But if you have a student that's chosen to come to school and, but one of their teachers is off. And then when they go off, do they still have that ability?
Yeah, they would still, you know, be on calls or emails or the Google Meet, kind of the live screen, the screen conversations.
That's not an issue then?
Right.
I was going to ask her about, before you mentioned it, the idea of a, a date, setting up the daycare center on campus. A tongue-in-cheek question, and it looks like you're addressing it. I guess one of the questions is, okay, we have, let's say that ends up happening. You end up with kids here from different school systems, different grade levels. Are we set up and will we be able to accommodate them from a technological standpoint to be able, for them to be able to do virtual schooling?
Right. I would say that wouldn't be our responsibility. I mean, we have Wi-Fi access that they'd be able to log in. But that would be up to that parent and the daycare provider. You know, you're bringing your own device and they're doing school, or maybe they're not doing school. You know, maybe they're reading books and playing video games, and they're going to do school at night when mom or dad is at home with them.
The question I had was, today I'm teaching from the classroom. Tomorrow I'm teaching from home and I've got students in the classroom. Is our IT staff able to be flipping things back and forth relatively easily and do a poundy, you know, on the fly, lots of different changes going on ahead?
Right. Even within-person instruction, every teacher is going to be logged into Google Meet, and they have Canvas. So whether you're a student in person or you're a student virtual, you'll have that same Canvas page. The students will see the same assignments and lessons and so forth. When the teacher, if a teacher has to teach from home, there is the extra, I guess, work. We'll have to figure out who goes into that classroom and sets up, right, gets it onto the whiteboard.
It's going to need to be some professional learning involved with any teacher's aides who are involved in supporting that classroom and how to get the Chromebook started and get the meetings started and things like that. One of the things that process-wise, we've been talking with teachers about was hopefully the student can be the Chromebook starter of the meeting. And no matter who's in that classroom, that's that kid's job. You get that Chromebook started, because they have to do it for the virtual students anyway. But they would also be done, maybe connecting to the teacher as well. But it's complex. It's not, I don't mean this to make it self-easy.
No.
And, and there isn't IT staff necessarily to flip things from live. Our teachers are doing that work. We have a teeny, teeny, tiny IT staff.
Boy, I know that girl.
That is, that is really quite drubald, okay, to, to fill the needs that we're currently in in terms of, of technology.
I know Donna Short, but she's not that short.
Yeah.
She's pretty teeny.
She's got real shoulders.
Right. So it is, it is, it is not a simple task. And what Laura is describing, if a teacher would then also need to connect to her virtual students and students in the classroom, it, it will involve some really well-executed planning. And if a teacher finds themselves in that predicament, it's, I think, I think how we talk with parents about that, that situation will also be very important. As Sue indicated, they sign up to be face-to-face with a teacher. And because of circumstances beyond our control, quite frankly, their teacher may two days to three days a week have to, for a bit, teach from home. And that might be, in terms of managing our parents' expectations, a disappointment. But the alternative is not, is not a very positive one in terms of learning. So we're all going to have to exercise, I say it a thousand times a day, space and grace. Let us work through it. And this is, you know, I, I still think that this is a great option, but it's, we know that it's not an ideal option, but none of this is ideal right now. So we have to, we have to be, be positive in the way we think about the solutions we are able to identify, because the alternative is maybe no teacher, and that's, that's not acceptable. So this is a better option.
But there's no one answer. I mean, we, there's absolutely no one answer. So we, we can sit here and talk all we want. That we're either going to have a choice, or we're going to have one answer, and it's going to make a whole lot of people upset. I, I mean, there's, there's no way to go here.
Well, so I guess I'm a little curious about the childcare options. And of course, I'm a little biased because we spend a lot of time working on childcare issues. I am in favor of teachers having a sort of firm schedule that has them working when they're supposed to be working and taking care of their kids when they're supposed to be taking care of their kids. And I'm particularly in favor of us. And I'm particularly in favor of us making it easier for the teachers to be able to do that. And if that means putting childcare in a school here somewhere, even if it's considered for the front end of the semester before, you know, we're hustling to implement Plan B. I, I, you know, obviously, I'm not the guy that walks around signing blank checks, particularly not for Arrowhead High School. But if, if the numbers are reasonable, I'd be in favor of looking into having that option available immediately and, or thirty days from now if that's what's required. So the, the teachers who are trying to decide whether or not they've got to take leave in order to watch their kids are, you know, encouraged into a regular nine-to-five job or seven-to-three job that lets them be a teacher and not a parent for eight hours. And hopefully that means that our teachers are more mentally healthy because they're habituated to their regular work schedule and our, and our students are getting higher quality education.
Right. We have talked about looking into trying to start childcare immediately or as immediately as possible if it's needed.
License is the thing.
Right.
Yeah, we have to have a licensed provider. So like, that's why we're going with this Champions Daycare where we're trying to, because we know that they have a license to be a daycare. So it might be quicker for them just to take their license and put it into Arrowhead. We had a little bit of a snag today, I just got off the phone with my representative. I think we can work through it. But the other possibility that I just started looking at the paperwork for is if we can try to fast-track Arrowhead to becoming a licensed daycare provider as well too, because if we can't get, if, if, if the obstacles are too great for a company to come in, then we just might have to try to work as another option to get ourselves licensed and hire a daycare professional. And I know that the, the company said that states are being a lot more lenient with the, like, trying to fast-track people to become licensed, so. But it's, it's kind of a rock and a hard place, we're just trying to work through all the, the technical aspects of it. And hopefully this little snag with Champions, we can get work through and try to get it as soon rather than later, so.
And we would see it as minimal cost to Arrowhead. I mean, there might be licensing fee, we're not going to charge them to use our space, you know, but it's the, the staff members are paying for the service.
The question though, it would be, I think, what Tim's, Tim's idea is if we have the students in the buildings though, do we have a physical location to have a childcare place versus if they're at home?
Right. It would be much more like, it might be this room.
I mean, that's the thing though, is like, and, I think that Sue's also alluding to, we're just talking about rock and hard plays, every single decision that we're, we're looking at, maybe, and so it's, it's really scrapping right now to try to solve all the problems we can. And with the daycare piece too, what we're looking at is, so like, in my situation, my kids already go to daycare, they have before and after-school care, I got an infant out there, I got two school-aged kids. But if we go virtual and I, you know, at work, I just pay my guy more. Like, my, my problem is solved with money. The, the families that are regarding the big issues is if you had like a nine-year-old and a seven-year-old, you're out of the daycare scene now, right? All these schools closed, daycares are inundated, like, I can't even throw money at the problem because, like, I just, there's nobody taking them on. I don't have like neighbors or anything like that that's willing to do that, so like, I just have nowhere to go with my kids. So if we open up something in here, then we're providing that option, maybe makes it a little bit easier for people to, to have that option. Because again, like, what we need to protect against is not having staff happy to say, like, I have no option and I have to not teach now. Because that's, that's the biggest rule that we would, that we would take, so.
Anybody else wanna give Laura some guidance? I think, I think we're probably looking at the flexible option there instead of demanding maybe in the buildings, but is anybody else?
If you need time, I'd be happy to help work at that daycare.
Oh, boy. Hey, can you mute that, Dave? Thanks, Dave.
So is the expectation that teachers are doing virtual, that they're doing live instruction?
Some of it will be live, some of it may not be live. It depends on the lesson itself. So we're wanting, teachers will have the, the virtual classroom open. We're expecting kids to be there first thing in class, check in. There might be a fifteen-minute lesson where the virtual students are listening and watching just like the in-person students. And then it could be, now for the next twenty minutes, you have time to read your novel and answer questions. Well, the virtual students, they could sit there and do it at the same time. Or it could be, the live instruction piece is over, so virtual students, you can stay on or you can turn off your computer, save that work for eight o'clock at night and do some other work. So there's not a yes or no in terms of, it won't be all live synchronous, it won't be all asynchronous different times of the day. It's going to be a pattern.
Teachers still have time to see what they're doing, what they're doing. You know what I mean? There's, there's all that happens.
The goal, if I might, if I might, the goal is, you know, to provide a structure for better connectivity than we had in the spring. For there to be both synchronous scheduling so that students, like adults that are working, the teachers that are working, have a set schedule in which you can connect with them. But we are mindful of the amount of screen time our virtual learners will be on screen. So to say it's live all the time, sometimes it doesn't make sense for them to sit there and watch something happen that they really don't need to be there for.
Sure.
So we want to make sure that we create that flexibility for teachers to say, okay, now's a good time, if you want to leave the meeting, you can leave the class. But the more, I've been having conversations this week with program leaders and teachers, they are coming up with really good systems to make sure they're connecting with kids every day in a meaningful way. Not necessarily live, but, but, but opportunities are definitely there to connect every day. But that live instruction component is being built in much more so than it was in the spring, but it's not every day. I'm very encouraged by, hugely encouraged by what our teachers are, the structure we've been giving them to work within and the goals like I just identified, and they're figuring it out to make it work. So I'm, I mean, I, I think we're gonna see improvement there. And if for some reason we have to go virtual for a period of time, I think our kids are thousand times better prepared than they were in the spring and so are our teachers. So a thousand times maybe an exaggeration, but they're really, really thinking through it. In those first days of school, identifying the structure of course, how a course is set up, how you find me, where you find these things. I mean, we did not have that opportunity in the spring as much, we were doing it already virtual. This is going to be, I think, of an improvement. Is it gonna be perfect? No way, but it's gonna be an improvement, definitely.
Let, let the teachers teach.
Laura, you mentioned earlier that, you know, in the spring, we're having kids contact teachers eight PM to eleven PM at night. Is there some way of cutting that down, say, you know, as of eight o'clock, get the doors closed or something? We can't have our teachers work in those kind of hours, we just can't.
And we're coaching our teachers on that. You know, you can't, you can't kill yourself doing this. And you can't be a martyr either. So, right, I mean, that's, that's helpful to students and to staff members if we're trying to keep more of a normal schedule.
You got directions?
Yes.
I don't have any directions, I have all that, but go for it.
Oh, no, clear direction.
You've got so many directions, you don't know which end to go.
I just think it's so overwhelming. I know so many parents were so happy after our vote on the twelfth about, you know, staying open and five days a week, and I could really positive things back. I think it's a really, oh, it might be too pleasant to let them know, you know, they're thinking of something like this, but I can see the challenges. In regards to the-
Well, the challenge is the law. So it's not just, he has to comply.
But you know, in regards to the childcare, are any of the teachers, like, if we have the five days a week, could we still have the childcare if their children are learning virtual somewhere else? And do it when they're still, you know, here and?
Yeah, we're looking into that.
Okay, I, it's not just like it was a virtual option that we do the-
Well, that's what we first-
The very problem is we've gotta get licenses. So these teachers are stared down in two weeks, their kids are gonna be, have been more of us than two weeks now. I wish we were two weeks still. Two weeks away and we probably can't get a license in time, so that's like the part where it's like, we, we might not have that ready to roll in time for them, so. But yeah, maybe the idea would be to get it up as soon as, as soon as possible and see who would want to take that option.
It's just like so much to think about, it just makes your head explode.
That's an understatement.
Yeah, truly.
Okay, anything else?
No. We can do the press meeting in attendance.
Okay, we'll see. We'll try media reports soon.
You wanna say anything about, we, we've talked more about this though.
Yeah, we, we just kind of ran through the, a little bit more detail of the blended learning environment and just kind of gave us-
We're so behind on that. So, go on, move on.
That was the point for the meeting.
September twenty-fourth, see you there.
All right. Financial legislation, just reporting what's coming up at seven o'clock.
See you at the gym, or in the theater.
The gym, keep doing rounds, Kat.
Well, you heard in the past, we got a lot of stuff done this spring since we didn't have any students here, so we had the opportunity to get a lot of stuff done then. There's been a lot done, a lot that's in the report. And the bleachers have arrived, the new bleachers have arrived on the loser side, they're being installed as we, well, exactly as we speak, but they're in the process of being installed. The light should be in probably about the second week of September, as I recall, so things are moving along. Hold on, I'll probably check.
Any questions for Ken? Ken reported everything's been going good. Yeah. Okay. Okay, under personnel, real quick, we did identify our teachers of the year and our Arrowhead award recipients. Obviously, we'll hold on until next month, but as a reminder, next Tuesday, seven-ish, seven forty-five, we'll have our, Laura's gonna switch it up so we can get these done first, basically first thing. And the main reason for that is, this year we expanded the category and we, we're giving awards to community members that have had significant contributions to Arrowhead over the years. Those recipients know they're getting it because we had to get them here, so they're invited, I think there's seven of them. So they're invited to be a part of that initial program. The recipients from our staff and the Arrowhead teachers' awards don't know who they are like we've done in the past, so. It was something that Laura and Greg brought forward that they would like to get some recognition to these significant community members, and it was a great expansion. And you'll, you'll see our, our inaugural class is pretty historical group, so we're pretty proud of that.
And we talked about it being a bigger group, now it's not always gonna be like that.
Right. I mean, our perspective would be administratively, typically like that friend of Arrowhead would be one a year, maybe two, but-
Yeah, we have so many good ones.
Right. So there's seven because it was hard to choose which one should be first.
Okay. And then next meeting will be to be determined. Policy, anything about?
Next meeting to be determined.
Okay. WASB?
Uh, doesn't look like WASB's gonna be doing much in-person. You've probably, you should have received a number of invites to various online sessions. If any of those are interesting to you, feel free to log in and follow them. How do you know if we have a state convention this year? To be determined.
Just as an additional thing to that, I was emailed by a consultant for WASB. I thought it was suspicious at first, so I asked Laura if this looked legitimate or not. Anyways, there, WASB is putting on a webinar on September tenth, and we'll remind you as we get into September, that it's a, basically a Zoom webinar that anybody can log in or it's designed for school boards and for superintendents, that's kind of the theme of it. And it's gonna talk about law enforcement in schools. And this is kind of on the heels of obviously defunding things and different school boards doing different things. And so I did some investigative work, found it was very legitimate. Bob Butler is actually the one that suggested that this consultant contact me. So anyways, we'll be part of, there's four of us on the commi, on the committee, the president of Madison School District, president of La Crosse School District, and then there's a school safety professional association, some type of like that, they have an executive director. That person will be on, and then myself. And they, they pre-gave us the questions ahead of time so we can prepare to answer those questions. And I'm tapping on Adam. Adam's my coach and Deb's my coach and Becky's my coach, and we're gonna sit and talk through these questions and so I can just remember bullet points, talking points of what we do here. And I have some of my, you know, ideas just from my law enforcement experience, so I'm, I'm counting on these guys to coach me correctly and then we'll take it from there. So I think it's kind of a cool honor for Arrowhead, and I'll make sure I'm learning something Arrowhead and our background will be Arrowhead, so it'll be all Arrowhead. So we'll take advantage of that opportunity, so.
Can't do your forehead a little bit?
Yes. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
There's not a lot of room there. It could go all across, you know?
You don't ask like, like Jeff has, you know, the, the-
The Arrowhead colors, right?
I mean, you have the hawk on the top and then, you know, AHS, perhaps a porcupine.
I could wear that hockey, the goalie hockey.
Yes, right, right.
So, okay, Sisa, you think so?
No, you know, we met last night, I had a conflict, but we didn't meet all summer, so there's.
Okay. Employee transactions, we have a couple of resignations. Laura kind of talked about those two ones, a teacher and I think the hand in one of the, is a custodian.
I'll move that we accept the resignation.
Motion second, any question on those? Hearing not all in favor, state aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. And then we have a page of contracts for some new hires.
I could recommend we do the hires.
Second. Good motion, the second, any question on those? Hearing not all in favor, state aye. Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Thanks, Dave. Motion carries. And then discussion actions, so accepted donation of $2,500 for our engineering program from Sarah and Eric Myers.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion second, any question on that?
What's your connection to Arrowhead?
They emailed me in June and they were very pleased with how we handled graduation. And that got them talking about not just graduation, but also the experience their child had at Arrowhead and wanted to give back. And they said if it could be something specific to tech ed, and they have a daughter, and so perhaps something about females in tech ed roles in classrooms. It's very nice.
Kate, you have a second, first and second?
Yeah.
Any other, any questions on that donation? Hearing not all in favor, state aye. Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, any more COVID update, Laura?
I put it all in the beginning so we would have time.
Awesome. Okay. And you can, uh, something going around on our next topic, can you pass this down? I'm sorry, it's right here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And if we, I'm not gonna, I don't want to push anybody on this one, so if we need to come back later, we can adjourn and come back and discuss it, but on Monday night, Laura and I had a scheduled meeting with representatives from Hartland, which included the village president and, and the administrator. And this was just to continue our conversation about some partnerships that we've all talked about with the Connector Road and the annexation of Arrowhead property. Unfortunately, at the last minute, Jeff, the village president couldn't come, so Laura and I still had a conversation with, with Tim, the administrator, and we're gonna quickly try to reschedule another meeting so Jeff could be there. I put this together, this is what I gave to him, these are all based on our discussions in the past, and really all I'm looking for is, are you, is everybody comfortable that we continue to have these discussions? This doesn't lock us into anything, but these are the things we talked about. And real quickly, the Connector Road, which would be Connect Arrowhead Drive to Campus Drive, we talked about a fifty percent split on that. And then the annexation, we talked about now that, and thank you, Tim, for getting all the, the documents we needed for our deed restriction search and stuff, we're in the clear with all that stuff. So our bullet points is that they would agree to annex all of our property, they agreed to provide all municipal services to us, eventually they would take over our school resource contract. The one we have now runs through the 2023, 22, 23 school year. We do have an option out of that, but it's not like if we did this transfer, Hartland have to run out tomorrow and buy, and buy higher a, a school resource officer, they would have kinds of budget accordingly and stuff like that, so. We agree to pursue the sale of our farmland for the, for the right price. We have it out there, we're not gonna sell- We have it out there, we're not gonna sell it once we get the right price. And this is kind of a note to the town of Burton, that Hartland would reach and never levy property taxes against us.
Did the other kid believe in doing that?
They did it, Town of Burton did it on our farm. He paid $6,000 this year to Town of Burton.
I didn't even realize that.
Property taxes.
We're fighting it.
We're still working.
I was gonna say, yeah, that's not right.
And then the other, the other part of it is our, our mark, and there could be more bullet points as we work through this, but our marketing partnership is this is a partnership, this isn't Arrowhead asking this or Hartland asking that. We're doing this together because we both stand the benefit from this total package of stuff. And our talking points, Hartland's provided sewer and water to Arrowhead since 1956. They, they provided fire service since 1956. We now have common borders on all sides of the campus. Arrowhead has Hartland Street address and Milling addresses, there's no deed restrictions. And just to follow up, last month, I, I attended a plan commission meeting because there was, they were, they were deciding to move the property, which is across from Lake Country Lutheran. And there was a, room was packed with Chestnut Ridge residents because the discussion was whether they were gonna punch a road through into that. They ultimately, it was actually a joint meeting between the plan commissioner and the village board. They voted down the road, but in the public hearing part of it, there was a lot of complaining, talking about the North Avenue traffic from Arrowhead. And I made note of that because we talked to Tim, who said, "You were there, you hurt all those people. That only justifies more that Hartland should partner with us on this Connector Road. You have the land, it's your, it's your slice of land, you wanted to keep for that. And we all benefit." And I said, "I can guarantee all those people in Chestnut Ridge are gonna be knocking at your door and saying, 'You like this idea,' so hopefully that is a positive thing in our favor as well." And I just threw in there that Arrowhead will never change its name. I'm sure there's gonna be people that could say, "Well, that's the next step," or whatever. No, it's never gonna change its name from Arrowhead, it's just the physical location of the property would be the diligence that would come from Burton, so. The next step is we're gonna meet again and we would start having the village attorney and our attorney, Bob Butler, work on the petition for the annexation, get this going. We told them we would like to potentially get this on a docket in September. For, it has to go through the plan commission first, we wanna be able to get this rolling because that's the one to try and get the land annexed before the end of the year. And then with the idea of potentially selling it in, in 2020, so. And potentially building that road next year as well. So that's kind of a synopsis, these are all, I'm hoping nothing on here is a surprise to you because I think we've had these discussions. I just try to be more concise with it. And if you're okay, all we're agreeing to is allowing Laura and I to continue partnership conversations with Hartland, it doesn't lock us into anything. And we definitely keep everybody apprised as we work our way through these next couple of steps. Oh, I think it's very private.
Yeah, we're all here.
Okay.
Thank you, Laura.
So we would entertain a motion to, uh, an action on partnership with the village of Hartland on the proposed Connector Road construction and potential land adaptation.
A move.
Motion and second, any questions on that? All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thanks, Dave, motion carries. Let's have a motion to adjourn.
So.
Motion and zero, and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.